Yeah. What do you want? Oh my god.
But I'm six people.
No. I'm like that's good.
You too.
He. He gets. That's not true.
Or they're not. That's not fun. But. Careful. Hey. Yeah. So.
It is cool. Yeah.
Uh-huh. Can't take. And you speak that. John. Right. John. Okay. All right. Okay. Well, I guess.
Yeah. We. Oh, can you look? You guys. So. No.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's all. No.
Right. Yeah. Right. I have to. That's nice.
Okay.
Yeah. First. Some. So. Yeah. Did you? For.
Three. Seven. Four. Three. You want? He got. Yeah. One. I need. I think that's that.
Okay. I think shots. Well.
I want to take a.
You're asking.
Yeah. Now, I'll pose your question.
How am I doing? Alright. No, no. Yeah. We didn't work. Yes. Brother. We talked about going for it. Um. Did you see? Okay. So you guys.
Oh, Mark.
All right. I mean, the facts. The facts didn't go down. What's the general? Now. Yeah. First. I think it's a great office. First, the period. I feel. A. Two. Higher. Why? Why?
Okay. So. So this.
Okay.
I'm. Yeah. This is our. Yeah.
Do it. Do it.
Yeah. And.
All right. It was asked. So. Which? Now, it's actually. It's. All of you.
Oh.
It's definitely. So it was. Yeah. Yeah. I know you.
It works out. See. It's something. I'm not. Yes. Oh. Oh. Something. It's.
Right.
God.
So. So. Got you. Assault. Okay. So much.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So. There's another. Ah. This. So. Good time.
Everybody seem about ready? Is everybody ready in the back there? You're good to go? Okay. Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Bob Dallas and welcome to the Dunwoody Planning Commission. And we're going to go ahead and follow our agenda, which of course is first, our roll call. I'm gonna start to my left.
Erica Harris.
Thomas O'Brien.
And I'm Bob Dallas.
Kirk Keanders.
I'm Ally Mattwood.
So Ally, you're the newest member. Tell us a little bit about yourself if you, if you like.
My name is Ally Mattwood. I've been living in the city of Dunwoody for about three, three and a half years now. I, I currently have, this is my first time at this board meeting, but I've currently represented a zone and planning commissions for a city in Louisiana, and I currently volunteer with the Dunwoody Police Department.
Great, well, thank you and welcome aboard. We also have another member, which unfortunately her plane was delayed, so she wasn't able to join us, Jackie Edmondson. So I assume at our next meeting, we'll get to meet her. I just want to also thank three members who served, which of course, we know Rob Price has been elected to city council, so he resigned. He didn't want to have any conflict of interest of having served on both boards on the same matter. And we heard recently Ed Wagner has moved down to St. Pete. So thank you to Ed for his service many years on this board, especially given where he lives, which is in the heart of perimeter at the Manhattan. And of course Jared Abrams, who rolled off a meeting or two ago, we just want to thank all the three of them for the service that they had. Just switching gears, I'd like to bring you up to date on something. I was able to speak with Paul Lionheart. He of course had been on the staff and served us and he and his wife Kimberly Sargent tragically were hit when they were on a conference in Chattanooga. He's on the road to recovery and I gave him the best for us and thank him for his service and look forward to his coming back. Kimberly has a longer road and so keep your prayers to them. Because they've suffered a lot and it's ironic that as pedestrians are getting hit by an impaired driver, alleged impaired driver unfortunately. So with that, welcome everybody. And the first or next item is the minutes. We have our October 12 minutes. If you've had a chance to review those, there'd be a motion or comments.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion, a second. Are there any more comments on that? All right. All those in favor of adopting the minutes signify by raising your hand. You, you, you have to abstain only because you weren't here. All right. Opposed, any obsessions? There we go. Thank you. That's all right. Do we have any unfinished business, Richard, that you know? Our work is never done though, you know? So it's always unfinished, which is a good thing. All right, we do have new business and we have two items. And folks, the way that we work this, of course, is we have staff presentations and then we have 10 minutes in favor and 10 minutes in opposition. And then we go through the planning commissioners asking their questions. And the goal of course is that everybody's questions get answered and hopefully we're able to deliberate and shed some thoughts on what's before us and share those thoughts with the city council when they make the final decisions. So the first one is RZ 21-02. So who will be giving the staff presentation? Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. So the first case is, under consideration is 11 Ravinia Parkway. The applicant requests both to modify the conditions of a previous zoning case. And then second, they are requesting a concurrent variance. The variance is to allow relief from street frontage requirements on Ravinia Parkway. So just a quick note before I get into everything. Concurrent variances are a new process for Dunwoody. A couple of months ago, you recommended approval on a crop of text amendments. And one of those, like I said, included concurrent variances. They utilize the same criteria as a regular variance, which is different from the rezoning approval criteria. I know this isn't something you guys are used to considering just yet. So if you have questions about the criteria or my analysis, I'll be happy to address those later on. But first, let me give you a little bit of background on this property. I'm sure you guys have all noticed this site at some point. It's the large grassy hill at the intersection of Ashford Dunwoody and Ravinia/Hammond Drive, right adjacent to 285. So the applicant again is requesting to change the conditions of zoning from a previous zoning case in 2019. But they've actually had a several series of rezoning cases. So in 1982, when the Ravinia development was first proposed, this property was just reserved as sort of blank space for transportation and access. And then in the subsequent three decades, there were three different proposals. So 1997, there was a high-rise office/retail building proposed. In 2004, there was a restaurant/retail development. And then again, like I said, in 2019, there was another development. This was 156 key hotel with 41,400 square feet of restaurant and retail space and a three-story parking garage. You can see on the right part of your screen, there's the site plan from 2019. This is what they're proposing today. It is a 110,000 square foot retail facility. Specifically, the applicant is a furniture company, so it would be furniture retail. It will have only 37 surface parking spaces and then 132 subsurface parking spaces. And I say subsurface rather than like parking garage because of the topography of this property. The building is going to be cantilevered essentially over the parking lot. It's not, you know, like a traditional parking deck. There will be no vehicular access from Ashford Dunwoody Road. All access is on Ravinia Parkway. Circled in blue on the site plan is the main entrance that provides the entrance to the subsurface parking. And then circled in pink is the front entrance to the building. And then also shown in green at the corner here is a courtyard slash open space area that the applicant is proposing. Then further east on Ravinia Parkway, there's a red and yellow circle showing where the other two entrances are. Essentially, these curb cuts create a horseshoe drive. And this is the area for customers to pick up items and also the loading dock for materials. And I've just highlighted that loading dock area in purple, so you could see it a little bit better. And then obviously, the gray area outlined is the building itself. This is a graphic that I've created, just highlighted in red to show you the area where they're requesting the variance. It's approximately 650, or excuse me, 660 feet of frontage where they're asking for relief from the street frontage requirements, which are essentially just, you know, the sidewalk and the planting strip requirements. And I've circled in blue the crosswalk that they're proposing. And that connects to the sidewalk infrastructure across the street. Public Works determined that this was inappropriate equivalent. So along the Ravinia frontage where the applicant requests the variance, there are several large oak trees pictured here. We feel that these trees can and should be adequately protected during and after the construction of this project. You can see they're very large, they're tall, they're relatively healthy. And in the interest of preserving these trees, staff does recommend some changes to the site plan to ensure this. We feel that the middle curb cut and some of the surface parking that's highlighted in red unnecessarily endangers the health of these trees. So we'd recommend that they be removed. And then additionally, as part of the applicant's rationalization for why the variance should be approved, they did cite the preservation of these trees. So I just wanted to note that as well. Here, we, I am showing just the area, the rendering of the courtyard that the applicant provided. And then as part of the courtyard area, they're proposing to preserve all of these trees shown in the picture on the left. These are rendering showing what the building would look like from the road. And then these are renderings of all four sides of the building provided by the applicant. And then as far as the variance approval criteria goes, like I said, Public Works has determined that the proposed crosswalk is an appropriate alternative to the street frontage requirements. And so we feel that they are, you know, equivalently meeting, you know, requirements for public safety. The topography of the site, and again, like I've mentioned, the trees before. The presence of the trees and the topography greatly complicate the installation of a sidewalk and planting strip. That's a very wide area. It would require the removal of all of those trees and also a lot more additional disturbance to contend with the steep slope over here. So like I said, in lieu of the street frontage requirements, we just recommend that they provide a 20-foot easement to the city to provide us access for any future street development projects there. And then just today, this afternoon, the applicant did provide an updated site plan. While it is an improvement to the previous one, you can see that they've removed that parking that was adjacent to Ravinia Parkway previously. We still feel that the middle curb cut would require unnecessary tree removal. Overall, we find that the proposal is generally consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan and consistent with creating a more urban form in the perimeter center. The use is appropriate for the area and it's actually less intense than what was previously proposed. So congestion is a concern. It's definitely would cause less traffic than any previous proposal. So overall, staff is recommending approval based on the exhibits and conditions that we provided in the packet. I'm available if you all have any questions. You can make one vote if you're making a consistent, you know, approval on both. But if you're making a different recommendation on both of them, you can make separate motions, I believe. No, the time remains the same.
Okay. In that light, those who would speak in favor of it, Mr. Webb.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Din Webb, 1105 West Peachtree Street, Atlanta 30309, here on behalf of Living Spaces Furniture. Before we begin, let me introduce a couple of folks here with me. The first in the back is Brian Saltikoff. He's a senior project manager with Living Spaces. And for those who don't know, Living Spaces is a California-based company. They're a modern furniture retailer. They've got 29 locations. And I think interestingly to most of us, they have several signature designers in addition to your typical designers. And they are Drew and Jonathan Scott of, you know, Discovery Channel fame, Joanna Gaines of Magnolia Homes, and Nate and Jeremiah, who are at least in my house on TV quite a bit. So also with us tonight is Derek Richrour, who's with Kimberly Horn. Both these guys are ready, willing to take your questions if need be. Madalyn did a good job of setting up the property. And so I'm going to skip over a bunch of that. Let me just mention a couple additional points. The site that you saw is 3.45 acres. As you know, it's vacant, it's zone PC2. And everybody knows it's part of Ravinia, but just for background, Ravinia is 42 acres and consists of basically three buildings and a 500-room motel. Madalyn mentioned the fact that the property's been through a number of zoning iterations over the last 40 years, many of which my partner and I have been involved in. But we're here to talk about the most recent one from 2019. That rezoning was subject to a site plan and it approved 156 key hotel, 41,000 square feet of retail and a three-level parking deck. As you heard, our hope is just to modify the condition that makes that site plan a subject of the approval to allow 110 square, 110,000 square foot retail space, subsurface parking spaces. So it was originally 37, but as you heard, in an attempt to respond to the staff's issue, we've reduced the surface parking spaces. And I'll talk a little bit about that more later. But also 132 subsurface spaces under the ground. What I've handed you guys are two different exhibits. One are just elevations, sort of the pretty pictures that show you, you know, conceptually what the project's supposed to feel like, some elevations to show you what the building's going to look like. There was also material in there about construction materials. I'm not going to go over those. I thought I'd let you sort of kind of flip through those as we're talking. But the second set are the two site plans I'm going to refer to. But just as you flip through the elevations, you'll see that the building is very modern in design. As Madalyn mentioned, it includes an outdoor courtyard on Ashford Dunwoody. And the building itself houses the showroom and a design center. There's some images of both in the packet. But it also has a cafe. And that cafe opens up onto that courtyard that fronts Ashford Dunwoody Road. And they'll sell espresso and beer and wine and salads and sandwiches like that. And the furniture that you see around the courtyard is actually furniture that you can acquire in the store. So it's, you know, functional art effectively. As Madalyn mentioned, there are three access points into this property, all over Ravinia Parkway. She showed you some trees at the corner of Ravinia Parkway and Ashford Dunwoody. Those are existing and we've worked hard to keep those there. You heard we're providing all required streetscape on Ashford Dunwoody. And just to be clear, we are providing 250 feet of the required streetscape on Ravinia Parkway, but there's a point beyond which it really doesn't make sense to extend it. As you heard, there's an interest to keeping the trees. So we proposed erecting a crosswalk to the existing sidewalk structure on the other side of Ravinia Parkway. And the city's been fine with that suggestion. Staff's recommending approval of both. So I'm going to abbreviate my presentation so I can take your questions. But I want to hit on the main issue and we'll go to the site plans now. As I said a minute ago, if you look at the first page, you can see the original plan. There are three curb cuts proposed. The northern driveway is the main. Okay, that's how you get into the surface lots, the small surface lot in front of the building. But more importantly, it's how you get to the 132 spaces below the building. There are two additional curb cuts, one in the middle and one to the south, that as you heard, form sort of a horseshoe shape. Those are for both customer pickup and for truck deliveries. Madalyn highlighted the loading dock on the south end of the property. And as Madalyn mentioned, the staff asked in its report if there was a way to remove the middle curb cut to save some trees. We've spent a lot of time considering that issue since we got the staff report. And a reason you got the revised site plan today is because we had to kind of work through some things. And I know from Living Spaces standpoint, that middle curb cut is critical. Okay, that's how the 18-wheelers get into the property. If you look down, you'll see on the site plan, you know, the truck circulation plan. The idea is that they'll come in through the middle curb cut, you know, jog back towards Ravinia Parkway then back into the loading dock. And if that middle curb cut in there, the only option then would be for the 18-wheelers to pull down Ravinia Parkway, stop in the middle of the road, back into the driveway into the loading dock. And that does not seem like a safe or efficient operation. With that said, we do want to save those trees. And what we decided we could probably do is what you see on page two, which is remove the spaces on the east side of that driveway, the front Ravinia Parkway. And that will create about a 24-foot wide landscape area that we think is sufficient to protect the trees. I will note that I was told just a few minutes ago that the architect's a little bit zealous in removing the spaces and they'd like to find at least a few more spots for the five you see on the bottom of page one, somewhere towards the bottom. But the fact is, we're, you know, we have created a pretty significant area that we think is adequate to protect those trees and preserve them. So that's our request. You know, again, we think it's reasonable. We think we have a good justification for keeping all three curb cuts. But we've also feel like we've come up with a feel like we've come up with an alternate design that gets, you know, to the heart of what staff wants to do. I think I'm gonna stop there. I'm happy to take your questions. I'll reserve my time, and we'd ask for your recommendation approval subject to the revised site plan that I just discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Is there anyone else speaking in favor of the application? Is there anyone speaking in opposition to the application? All right, this part is closed. So with that, um, we'll turn it over to the planning commissioners, and I will once again turn to my left, Commissioner Harris.
All right, um, Mr. Webb, I have a couple of questions. All right, the first one is, um, thank you for explaining the curb cut. What I'd like to know is regarding the 18-wheelers, how many a day, do you know how many a day they anticipate coming in and out? And at what time would they traditionally be coming in and out of the property?
I do not know that. I'm not sure. Come on up, Brian.
All right, if you could please introduce yourself and thank you for answering the question.
My name's Brian Saltikoff. I'm with Living Spaces Furniture. I live at 5723 Cali-Pulorosa in San Clemente, California.
Your neighbor's with my sister, so.
What?
My twin sister lives in San Clemente.
Yeah. Oh, okay, well, um, so your question regarding hours of the, so typically there's one truck that would come in, in the morning, prior to business hours. Basically, what it does, it replenishes the floor, things that might not be selling. They'll take those off the floor, um, put some new uh, products on the floor from that truck. Would also um, provide the furniture that any of the customers might decide to pick up from the store as well. And that would come from, that was sourced from a cross dock that we're looking for uh, in the area. And eventually, we're looking for a large distribution center in the Atlanta metro area to feed, we're looking to build several stores in the area. So it would be four hours. One, once a day in the morning, maybe three or four times a week for those types of deliveries at the loading dock.
Thank you, Richard. And I might need your help here in terms of traffic, then. I'm trying to think about the curb cuts, and then I'm trying to think about when those 18-wheelers would be coming down and the difficulty of pulling forward onto Ravinia and backing in and what the traffic looks like during those morning hours, I'm assuming. Um, and thank you for uh, sharing when it would be coming in. So if it's before business hours, I'm assuming early AM, they're coming 6:00 AM, 7:00 AM to be able to get in there and get things unloaded?
I assume so. Um, that's a part of our point was that we could eliminate the middle curb cut because they could just ride down the street and back up.
Right. That's what I'm, and I'm trying to just like, if it was during high commute time, if it was during like a busy time, I could see that. But if we're talking very early morning hours, then it seems like that might be a quiet time to be able to do that. So that's something. Okay, thank you for that. I do want to say that I am excited about this project um, in terms of versus the previous project because of the flyover bridges and the outdoor dining right underneath what will be the flyover, um, you know, roads. And uh, so I think there's a lot of positive about this. I appreciate the um, attempt to preserve the trees. I like that the city would get the 20-foot easement as well. So assuming those trees bite the dust at some point in the future, the city can help invest in improvements along that area as well. Um, those are all my questions and comments for right now.
Mr. Webb?
Thank you, um, Mr. Webb. And I may have questions for you as well as, uh, as well as Richard. With regard to the second curb cut here, it seems to me that this is, the, the, the second curb cut is a tension between existence of older growth trees versus convenience. Uh, and with that said, uh, I'm understanding that without the second curb cut, we are also not only forcing the truckers to back in, but we will be forcing people purchasing uh, items at the store to probably do something similar. Is that your understanding? Should that curb cut not be granted?
Yes, sir. So there would be one way for the folks picking up at the loading dock as well. I think about 25% of Living Spaces sales are online. And so you can either have that delivered, you know, direct to your home or come pick it up at the store. So those folks would have to come in the same way.
And as I look at the elevation, one of the things I notice, and and this may be a question for Richard as well, it would seem to me that if the second curb cut is eliminated, that there would be a possibility, okay, uh, would, we would retain that separate parking area as its own little cell, but it would not be connected up to the top parking area. Is that correct? Okay, uh, and then with regard to the crosswalk there, I note the crosswalk takes folks against the curb cut there. Do we have any concerns about the ability of pedestrians to safely get to Ashford Dunwoody along this, this vessel?
So what would require the conditions is that place a sign uh, in the median approaching that cross access point. So just to warn them that pedestrians can be there.
Uh, would there be a light there? Okay, would it be, when you talk about the sign, are we talking about the flashing yellow signs that we're seeing pop up? Okay, uh, okay. Uh, and then uh, also saw mention, and I didn't hear anybody speak about it, so this may not be a substantial impact, but uh, southbound left lane is being removed. Did I understand that correctly? And what's the, what's the impact they're gonna be?
Yeah, this was leftover from the previous zoning. There are two left lanes headed southbound on Ashford Dunwoody. Um, and we've done the traffic studies and they're not really needed. So it makes it harder for those pedestrians to get across the highway, the road. It actually takes two lights to get across. So it'll, it'll expand that pedestrian space.
But there would still be left turn access through a single lane. Okay. And are we, are we imagining with regard to projected pedestrian and bike traffic, are we imagining that anybody, uh, projection-wise is going to be using this for any reason other than to get to the, to the furniture store, as in, is there adequate frontage on the other side of the street for pedestrian and bike traffic to get to Ashford Dunwoody without crossing the street here at this property?
So there's, it's access to that side, but it's also access to the properties to the north. People that cross there, they may go up to 84 perimeter center. Um, you'll remember, we rezoned that one. Just, we're just trying to keep the options open.
Okay, and and has the city considered potentially uh, allowing the second curb cut? Because the real issue seems to be curb cut versus trees. And at least that, that's as it's been explained to me. Has the city made any discussion to perhaps allow the curb cut but require planting of a proportion number of trees, maybe elsewhere, like the lower right portion of this property where there's supposed to be?
Those are huge trees, probably 30 inches. I mean, they're big trees. And they also form a backdrop on the store 25 and Ashford Dunwoody.
And and if I'm reading the elevation correctly, there are three big trees there. And if the second curb cut were allowed, only one of those trees would remain?
Maybe.
All right, well, I see the note here that says existing tree to remain. So, Mr. Webb, is that, is that correct? Is that your understanding curb cut to of those three trees, if the second curb cut were allowed, one tree would remain of those three?
Yeah, let me ask Derek.
Yeah, I'll say.
Hey, I'm Derek Zetrow with Kimley Horn. We're the, I'm a uh, registered professional engineer. We're the site symbol on this project. So when we're looking at the three trees, so I guess as a whole, there is a corridor of mature trees that go all along that frontage. So what we were trying to highlight there between the intersection and Ashford Dunwoody and Ravinia, and then at the other spots along that frontage where the trees could be preserved, we tried to show where those were located. Um, if that second curb cut remains, I, I, I would assume that it might be one or two trees, but we can look at that further because really what it, what you get into is more sort of the critical root zone of the trees at one, there's construction activity around it. So I don't have the best answer right now, but I would assume it's one or two of those mature trees that would go when that second curb come, uh, or when the certain second curb cover.
Okay, so your feeling is that we've got three trees that are the, the, the subject trees here, of which, one of which is probably likely to remain. The other two would go if the curb cut was allowed. Okay, thank you. Uh, I don't have anything further. Thank you.
If I could piggyback, I, I would say we would be open to, you know, alternatives to find supplemental plannings to make up for any tree density loss. So that's a conversation we can have between now and the final hearing.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Harris?
So, um, what what kind of shielding of the dock transformer and dumpster areas will there be? Um, I couldn't tell if the retaining wall on the 285 side would, would block that, the view of all that, but also on Ravinia Parkway, we'd want to try to shield the view of those, those areas.
Yeah, so from, well, at, at a minimum, what would be is obviously whatever is required by code as far as aesthetically and screening, what those would need to look like, we would expect that we have to adhere to. Um, just to go through the frontages there for that 285 frontage, just due to the topography, you guys could see this with photographs, how much it's dropping off. A lot of this frontage along 285 is pretty significantly lower from where the finished floors of that building are gonna be. Um, so what that's likely gonna look like is some sort of wall face that would be artificially raised to provide that screening from the interstate. But for Ravinia specifically, uh, we would, we would expect to have to adhere to the code standards for the screening requirements there.
Okay, maybe staff can speak to what, what that would be.
So ground-mounted mechanical equipment, dumpster areas, those all have to be screened. The dumpster areas specifically have to be screened with a wall or opaque fencing. Um, and then mechanical equipment, that type of um, stuff has to be screened either with vegetation or a wall. Um, and as far as the loading dock, um, there's not any specific screening requirements for loading docks themselves.
So what's the elevation from that loading dock area to, you know, maybe across to the hotel? I just don't know.
Derek might know that question a little bit better, otherwise I'd have to look at the survey.
I, so it is, it is pretty significantly lower when you're, when you're on that, the top side of um, Ravinia, just across that landscape that you see in between the one directional lanes there. There's, I think, approximately 15 feet of grade change that happens just between those two roads. So if you're up at the hotel, you're at that higher elevation before you even get to our road. And then from the loading dock on Ravinia on the low side by us to that loading dock elevation, they're approximately the same. So we aren't, we aren't artificially raising or lowering that loading dock to where that curb cuts wanna be. So what I'm saying is the elevation in the road right now, that same elevation would be adhered to for the loading dock area, which, which is already existing about 15 feet, I would assume. And I, that's not exact, that's just approximate, but around that elevation difference.
We, we hit on this a bunch. Last go-around on this one, Bob, I know you and I, I did, but there was a lot of concerns or questions surrounding the queuing from the traffic council on Ashford Dunwoody and the queuing to that first entry and, you know, should cars be turning left out of there, you know, that kind of thing. I assume the people that are a lot smarter than me have studied all this again. And Bob, I know you're our resident traffic safety guy on staff, but uh, anyway, I just, you know, I hope we've looked at all that again, the Kimley Horns and the staff and, and folks, because uh, I don't know, there's probably more traffic on Ashford Dunwoody Road than any other road in Atlanta. It's not a interstate and you know, the last thing we want is traffic backing up and, and, you know, so I worry about the queuing there if there happened to be a backup there, but I, I don't think that's possible. I'm more concerned about safety. You know, um, I drove this the last time, it was a year or two ago, and I know there's a right turn off of Ashford Dunwoody, and then there's the, the main intersection. It's fairly wide right there. It's almost a three-lane road at that point, maybe. So anyway, I just bring all that up again, I, you know.
I mean, the biggest issue is um, westbound travelers on 285 getting off at Ashford Dunwoody, who then want to go into Hammond. They have to traverse um, no, uh, part of the turn lane, but two travel lanes to get into two left turn lanes. And the way the traffic works out, when you have people who are heading east on 285 that are going straight on Ashford Dunwoody, you get a conflict point between that exit where the Divergent Diamond is to Hammond, which is the first traffic light. And, and I would just point out, you know, since I, I'm one of the car counts maybe two or three times a day at the intersection is watching the, the folks cross the road, it's, it's really horrific. Because if you have a group of five or six people, neither the center island nor the um, way the sidewalk is, is sufficient to accommodate that many people safely. I mean, it's almost like they're pouring onto the street. So you know, the hope is with some of the changes to the left turn into the project, heading southbound on Ashford Dunwoody by going from two to one, you'll increase the size of that center island significantly. So it'll be a safer crossing for those folks. And there's a lot of traffic since the hotel's right there going to perimeter. But traffic in one sense is success, though, isn't it?
The other, the other question I had was, um, what, what would an alternative use be for this property? Let's say things don't go well for the current.
We expected that question. So we think it would be a great kind of co-working space, you know, something like that. We work S-type space. It's got a significant amount of parking, particularly underground. It's a very open facility. Uh, you know, we don't anticipate that happening, but we have talked about it and we've considered it, and we think there, that's probably the highest of best use and the realistic use. Frankly, it's a great looking building. It would look great as, you know, that type of use, I think.
That's all I have for now.
All right, Commissioner Mabai? All right, I have a couple of questions, just to confirm the crosswalk that is parallel to Ashford Dunwoody, that, that will continue to, to be there, even though we're building a second crosswalk. Okay. And then, um, ju- just an observation, I understand the staff's concern over the middle curb cut. But if you have a semi coming in going into the um, driveway, if that's what we call that, not having to take up the entirety of the um, Ravinia Parkway, because it's already kind of now angled right to back up straight into the loading dock. You know, I could see where that makes it a heck of a lot easier for the driver, less traffic being blocked on the parkway as well as, um, you know, probably safer for all involved. That's one observation. Secondly, when you talk about eliminating those eight and five parking spots, if I look at Google Maps, there, there are trees along there. So except where they're needed to be taken out for the access point, you're saying you could commit to keeping those trees, assuming that the um, variance is adopted?
That's the plan. Yeah, that's exactly why we did it. Okay, I think honestly, we probably need to do a little bit more digging, and we've come up with this plan today. I think we need, I've already talked to Richard about maybe having to sit down and going over it, but the idea was to remove those trees to create adequate space for the, sorry, those parking spaces to leave adequate space of those trees to stay right.
Right. So when you get to the city council, you would show those trees just like the other three that are on here?
Yes, I think we have to do that.
Yeah, I think that would probably be more, I mean, so, you know, just again, from my observation, the idea of maintaining that middle curb cut for ease of the truck, as well as the customers picking up veins and being now better able to retain trees by eliminating those two sets of parking spaces, I mean, it seems to me to make, make sense. Now, if we're going to take one vote, then we have to consider and have a conversation about the variance. And as you have heard, the purpose of the variance is to eliminate the requirement that they have the perimeter street scape along this segment of the property. I will note that um, for the buildings, when you go down Ravinia Parkway, they're, they're not on this side of the street. They're on the other side of the street. So if there are pedestrians using it, they would have sidewalk already on the other side of the street. So the likelihood of this being used by pedestrians, even if there was a sidewalk, there's less than a little bit because of that. And then, as many of you all know, there's a trail system back in here, but that's, that's across the street from this. So it's not likely you would find the users of that trail system coming to use the sidewalk at this south side, I guess if that's the right term. Except, of course, you are providing the crosswalk at the close of Ashford Dunwoody, as, as is shown in your schematic here. So so this miss says we can make one or two um, motions as it relates to the applicant's request for changes to conditions. We have a staff recommendation, have a conversation about the uh, middle curb cut, saving trees, and of course, the variance. So I, I turn it to you all to make a So I, I turn it to you all to make a motion. If you want help, let me know.
I'm happy to take a swing if y'all want to consider this.
Sure.
I'm going to go ahead. And recommend that. I'm, I'm not sure how to refer to the, to the elevator, the schematics that we were just provided.
Well, you could refer to the one that's been provided in. Second page.
The, the, okay, and and that's, I'm, I'm going to recommend that we, we follow staff's recommendations with the exception. Of where those recommendations. Run afoul of the changes to the, that have been proposed in the second schematic that's provided. Which is preservation of the second curb cut as well as preservation of the trees in that area. And so I'm going to recommend that we follow staff's recommendations with the exception of the changes in that second, second schematic. With also an additional requirement that. All effort, I want a commitment that all effort be made to preserve as many trees along that way as possible. In addition, that any, that there be no net tree loss with regard to replacement trees. That are planted elsewhere on the property if necessary.
You want to include the variance with this?
I do, and. I, I'm not sure how to move that, so if you want to help, if you want to help me with that.
Well, just, just and, and to include in the motion, accepting the requested variance.
Subject to the same limitations.
Well, the variance is just a matter of eliminating the mandate that they follow the design standard.
Okay.
Of, of, of the curbs.
Well, well put, and I'll, I'll run with that, yes, I, I accept that.
All right. So the motion is or is second to the motion?
I'd like to add my very minor amendment that staff and applicant will work to. She, between now and council, will work as hard as they can to shield view of loading docks, dumpsters and transformers from the view, public view.
You accept that? Uncomfortable with the addition of that to the motion. So the minute has, the motion has been amended. Is there a second to the amended motion?
I'll second the amended motion.
Okay, there's a motion second, is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. All right, unanimous, for there are no votes, there are no novos. So, all right, well, thank you, good luck with that. And who knows, maybe this time there'll be a bill, a bill. I think it's the third or fourth time I've seen this in many decades. Thank you for the presentation. All right, the next item that we have on our agenda is RZ two one dash zero three, and. We all know where this one is, it's on Ashford Dunwoody Road. So with that, we'll hear from Ms. Smith.
So the second case under consideration is the modification of zoning conditions at six hundred Ashwood Parkway, also known as Perimeter Marketplace. I know you guys all know the background, but just to give a quick recap. In twenty nineteen, they proposed a complete redevelopment of the site, which included a twenty-five thousand square foot grocery store, a gas station and several. Restaurant and retail buildings. The site plan from twenty nineteen is shown on the right hand side of the screen, and I've highlighted a blank one point five acre tract. That was intentionally left blank during the twenty nineteen zoning cases. The applicant at that time wasn't sure what the most feasible use was there, but now they have come back to us. And they are proposing an eighty-four hundred square foot restaurant slash retail space there as well as sixty-two additional parking spaces and a drive-through ATM. The building is similar to those that are built, a budding Ashford Dunwoody Road. However, it is set back further than those along Ashford Dunwoody, and that's because during construction, they discovered. Quite a few underground utilities there that they cannot build on top of, so rather than being built zero feet from. The property line, this building is set back about twenty-five feet. But in that space between the building and the road, they have added some patio areas which are allowed there. Because of the utilities, and so that serves to activate the space there. Additionally, they're proposing a drive-through ATM. It's, you know, staff's opinion, there's already an ATM at this development. And drive-through ATMs specifically, drive-throughs in general are not something we're wanting to encourage in the perimeter center. And additionally, we feel that with the removal of the ATM, it would allow them to take those eight parking spaces that are highlighted there and shift them away from the street. Which we think would enhance the pedestrian experience there. This is the rendering, the proposed renderings, the north rendering, which is the one on top, is the one that would face Ashwood Parkway. One note I'd like to make is that staff in our conditions recommends that each tenant space have an entrance that faces the street. Same as, you know, what's facing the parking lot. Overall, we feel that this request meets all of the approval criteria for rezonings, provided that the applicant complies with our recommended conditions. Just a couple of notes on the conditions, they remain largely the same as the ones in twenty nineteen with three notable changes. And we've recommended these conditions sort of based on what we've noticed as this property has been built up and developed and as tenants move in and. Complete their interior build outs. So the first condition that we're recommending is that each tenant space should have an entrance on Ashwood Parkway. Like I said, one of the major goals of Perimeter Center is to encourage a pedestrian environment. To us, from staff's perspective, it doesn't make sense that you could enter, you know, two of the restaurant slash retail spaces from the street, but the others, you would have to. Walk around the building to the parking lot entrance to access them, and, you know, we feel that it's. You know, would be prudent to require that the other buildings don't have that requirement, and it's something that we've sort of flagged as, as something we would like to change. On this remaining building. The second is related to the required windows, so per the code, we require fifteen percent window coverage. But our code isn't really specific. About the window coverage. There's nothing that bars them from putting something directly behind the window. Or from putting, you know, non-operable window treatments there. You know, on other buildings on the property, like I said, if people, as people have applied for their interior buildup permits, we've noticed some people are putting. Walls in front of those windows, and we feel like that sort of defeats the purpose of having them there, so we want to guarantee that. At least the required fifteen percent. Window coverage maintains some sort of usable space behind them. Because the purpose of those windows is to activate the area, we want to see activity and what's going on there. And we want them to be actually functioning, and so that's what this condition about the windows aims to encourage. And then the last one is related to the ATM essentially limiting the development site to the one ATM that's existing at the anchor grocery store. But overall, we are recommending approval based on the exhibits and the conditions that we've provided. I'm available if you guys have any questions.
Thank you very much. All right, maybe we hear from the applicant's representative. Attorney Laurel David, welcome.
Are you all seeing this? Seeing my every move.
We see ourselves.
Not seeing you, we're seeing us right now. Which is very scary.
Is that working now?
It is, RZ twenty-one oh three sixty Ashwood Parkway.
Thank you. Laurel David, the Callaway Law Group, forty-sixty-two Peachtree Road, three oh three one five. Tonight, I've got with me Nick Tuleska and Jack Hillitt with Branch Properties and their architect Rob French. They're available to ask any questions. Okay, so it's not moving. There it goes. This is a rendering, I've also got it in the board in front of you of the proposed building from Ashwood Parkway. This is, as you can see, they're making use of that twenty-five foot utility easement area to activate, activate the streetscape. Here's a collection of renderings, we've shown the overall site in the lower left as, as well as some perspectives from the parking lot. As you can see, the remote teller there, which is on, proposed for the left side of the building is. Away from the, the center, or I should say the middle of the center, and will be heavily landscaped. A, actually, landscape plan was submitted with the package with extensive landscaping between that area and the street. This is the, the site plan itself, the actual drive aisle for the remote teller is going, was purposely put. Again, to the west, further most west side of the site, sort of almost behind the, the grocery stores, you could see. And a north, north, south access, it's actually also next to the drive aisle, which is the main entrance to the loading dock for Publix. And then that parking proposed to the left is really, it won't be designated as such, but the idea is that would be used mostly by. Employees of tenants on the site. Here's a colored version, just showing the overall plan. And then, again, the area that's up for debate this evening. Note again that it doesn't entirely reflect all of the landscaping that we're proposing for the, the front of the site. And also to shield that parking from Ashwood Parkway. You can see there, there's an existing sidewalk, crosswalk, which we've tied into, and then on the other side of the street is that detention pond for. The Ashwood Office Complex. The streetscape is, has been designed to save the trees on Ashwood Parkway, it's actually essentially. Pretty much the same as what was included in the original zoning. And again, the renderings, I wasn't sure if they were going to be shown tonight. The rendering, as you see on the north side, actually meets the perimeter seminar overlay requirements, but we're actually showing more window area. On this elevation that we've submitted with the package. So I'd like to like to run just through some of the conditions that we had submitted some proposed changes to. Essentially, what we're going to ask for tonight is for your approval, but with the understanding that we're going to have further discussions with staff about these proposed changes. Again, going, going back to the windows, as I stated, the, the overlay requires fifteen percent. There actually are some specific, specific provisions that require highly transparent glass and. Certain percentage of light transmission and, and, and that sort of thing, and we do meet the overlay requirements, and those are actually. The, rather than having a more restrictive condition, that's what we would prefer. The. Condition twenty-four, which is about the entrances, is also a little problematic. What we've actually just put in there is what is the condition that is the same as for the rest of the center. The PC, well, the PC overlay does not require a certain number of entrances for a building. Even if we were PC two. PC two does not require, would not require that each tenant have a entrance. Those requirements require only one primary street for entrance for every seventy-five feet. Now, though, I did have a question of whether or not we would even be required to do that, since Ashwood Parkway is actually a secondary street, not a primary street. But we actually meet the PC two district requirements, even though we're not zoned to those requirements, but that seems to have been a model that staff used for this condition. And then a lot of changes, as you can see, to these conditions that actually directly address the, the remote teller. We have agreed that if a financial service institution is, does not become a tenant in this building, there's possi- right now, we are. Have a potential that is looking at the site, that that remote teller would be taken out and the driveline could be converted back to a landscape strip. So again, what we're asking tonight is for your approval, with the understanding that we're going to have further discussions about these proposed changes with staff. And Nick Tuleska with Branch would also like to have a few words.
Nick Tuleska, Branch Properties Partner, thirty-three forty Peachtree Road, Northeast. Just want to make a, a couple of very quick comments about the remote teller. The nice thing about retail, I think all of us, to some extent, are experts, we all are customers of all of the. Restaurants, retailers and financial institutions in the market, and all of us have experience day to day. With, with these uses. One of the things that we're trying to do here is preserve and maintain flexibility. We all know that retail has been a very challenging environment over the past ten years, and what we've noticed over the last ten years is that retail uses have generally. Shrunk in size and format and looked for increased flexibility and adaptability. That's what we've designed in the entire project, and that's what we're adding with this eighty-four hundred square foot building. We think it's an outstanding opportunity to move a financial institution from what would normally be a pin corner. Off corner into a, a, a rather innocuous space towards the rear of the shopping center. But providing us with the flexibility to lease that space to a financial institution, to a restaurant or another retail use. And the goal here is to make sure that as the retail environment continues to change, we have that flexibility to keep that building leased. With, with a vibrant use that serves the entire community. So we, we, we are pushing back a little bit on this remote teller. As you know, in, in what we call phase one, we did have a bank zoned and approved with a drive-through. We've removed that use with one medical, so we don't really see that we're increasing the amount of, of, of remote tellers in the project, if anything. We're continuing to diminish and remove the use. I think that's the comment I'd like to make, so thank you very much.
Is there anyone else speaking in favor of the application? Is there anyone speaking in opposition to the application? All right, here, nobody, I'll turn it back over to. Commissioner, good for you.
So. It looks like there was a meeting held with the, a public meeting held to go over this, yes, I think I saw three names. One of the concerns I have is when this was last brought to us before the project was approved, there was some pretty significant pushback by. Residents in regards to what would essentially be a, a loss of green space, so there was concern over the. The retention pond slash lake, that was a point of enjoyment, and. The one point five acres was open for future enjoyment, but was also touted as an opportunity for green space. For, for an area for people to go to, and I, I mean, I see you shaking your head, but as someone who was in this meeting, that was something that I was hearing from residents, and it was. There was no future plans for it, and so there would be a grassy knoll, as it were, until there were plans, so there are plans. One of the concerns I have is what looks like a significant amount of parking, and I know it's allowed. But it looks like a significant amount of parking, so something I would recommend is some of that parking being taken to provide. Some more green space for the residents that will obviously be walking to this location. To have some sort of enjoyable outdoor area. I'm still thinking on that, but that is something that has come to my mind. Just based on the previous, the previous rounds we went with this, the feedback that was given by the community that I still remember. And knowing that we have an opportunity here to create, I think, flexibility, but also create a, a place of enjoyment. That would meet the local residents' needs in that area.
And, and not to diminish. Your desire, your observation about green space, but the. but the main reason that that parcel was left blank was because there was, at the time, a prospective hotel that was looking at it, but they weren't ready to to do anything at that point. Of course, we all know what's happened to the hotel industry since then. So I think the idea was, okay, well, we don't, we haven't really got this figured out. Publix is ready. We'd like to get this center started, and with the understanding we'll come back. And sure, you know, people can use it in the meantime, but it was not proposed for.
Oh, no, I knew it. And I said that. Yeah, no, I said that it was green space in the middle. And what I'm saying is now, hearing the residents, their feedback was, is that this is something they're losing through this project. And given the significant amount of parking that's in here, and even that teller, I think there is an opportunity to provide an amenity beyond the shopping, the retail experience, to make this perhaps a more well-rounded experience. Again, that's that's my opinion. That's going based on what I heard from our residents previously. And so that's part of what this comment period's about.
Anything else? Commissioner Bryant?
Ms. David, a question about the Ashwood entrances. What's the objection to having, you know, one entrance on on Ashwood for each parcel? Why is that an objection?
The overall master site plan with entrances as shown right now has been, is tied to multiple retailer leases as also Publix's lease. So to to alter any of the connectivity or changing right now.
Correct. I'm talking about the actual, yeah, entrance and ingress to the actual buildings themselves, the structure themselves. It seems like there's some sort of a variance between what the city wants and what what you all are proposing.
I I think what what the city has proposed is a door for every space. And what Laurel said is the code doesn't require that. We ultimately think there's somewhere in the middle we can meet with and and figure out with the city to actually wordsmith it so it reads exactly right. And we just need to meet with Richard to figure that out. So what, like Laurel said, is ultimately, we would hope to get approval on this motion based on the staff's comments or recommendations, with the additional recommendation that the applicant meet with staff to fine tune the language so that it works for both of us.
Okay, so what what I'm hearing is a request that we approve this, move it on to council without it actually being fully vetted as a plan?
Those specific conditions, not just not fully vetted, but just as it pertains to those specifics.
What you sent to us includes languages that you you.
This is what they proposed. Right, and I read that, but with with the idea that with the idea that further conversations need to be happening, they need to happen to materially change this plan before it goes to council, means that we are being frozen out of at least a portion of the process, which I've screamed about repeatedly in this in this setting, and so I'll I'll do so again.
Well, the the windows and the entrances, they won't won't change the plan. And I think the difficulty with the entrances is more about having the entrance being required to be open during all business hours than it is about having entrances. You know, as a fire doors, for instance, but that, again, that, you know, that is something we can wordsmith with staff.
Okay, and then I have a question for staff. With regard to the 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 window requirements, and we we seem to be wanting to dig in on the whether the windows allow light or not, what is that, what is the public good that is served by forcing light pass through the window surfaces?
So the code already requires a level of transparency so that you can look in and see the activity. My, the condition that I've written isn't really addressing the transparency that's already required by code. This goes just a little bit further to ensure that they're not putting non-operable window treatments directly behind that transparent glass, because then that, you know, immediately defeats the purpose of having the glass there. And this is, like I said, an issue that we've, you know, butted heads with other tenants with along the properties, along Ashford Dunwoody, where they're proposing, oh, we're just going to build a wall right here to cover up this, you know, transparent window. And we don't want to have to do that. We want something that, you know, gives us the power to say, hey, don't put a wall directly behind your required window.
Is that us serving the good, or is that us trying to resolve a market-based problem?
It's not a market-based problem. It's more of trying to preserve the activation of the space, which is what the windows are trying to achieve.
Good. Thank you. Shopping. I have nothing further at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Henders?
When does chicken salad chick open? Soon, I hope. All right. What what would the applicant's desire be if you lose the ATM? Staff has recommended that you move the parking spaces. Is there another, is there something else on your?
No, they're they're really for us, this remote ATM, the site plan that we've submitted, including the parking, is really an essential component of this of this application. Again, I'd just like to reiterate what I said. All of us today are are doing most of our banking through these types of remote tellers. Very few of us these days actually go into banks. I'm sure we're all well aware of that, and we're trying to preserve that flexibility. I want to go back and just reiterate the other point. We're well aware that Dunwoody doesn't want large vacant banks on pin corners throughout the city. And this is an opportunity, in our view, to accommodate that view and and to avoid having the future potential where a financial institution vacates, and you can't release the space because it was a special purpose-built building. What we have here is is a multi-tenant building that offers not only us great flexibility, but the retail use is great flexibility. So in the event that we have to replace a tenant, we have that flexibility to not replace them with a financial institution, but to replace them with a restaurant and activate an outdoor patio. And one of the other comments I would make, Ms. Harris, is we very much contemplated, you know, the green space in this particular plan with a larger landscape buffer, which has been a matter of, of course, maybe not even our desire, but because of all the underground utilities, we've got 25 feet as opposed to what would be normal. And as you see in the plan, we've activated both of these corners with large patios so that we can bring customers to the center. They can sit down. They can enjoy the project, so.
So the last question I had was, I still don't understand this entrance issue. I think we've heard from the applicant. Maybe staff could give us their version of the story. I'm still not sure I I completely understand it.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, so we are requesting that they, for each tenant, whether it's three tenants there or four tenants there, that each tenant provide an entrance from Ashwood Parkway, because the building is oriented towards Ashwood. That's what staff considers the front of the building, is the one facing there. And there's entrances to each facility from the parking lot. And so we want the same for pedestrians that are walking there, where they have an entrance to the tenant retailer restaurant space from the street. Like I said, we've required on on the other buildings only, I think, like two entrances facing facing the road. But, you know, this is a new request for a new building, so we're.
Just so I understand, so if there's two or three tenants there, they would have?
An entrance for each tenant.
On each side. So it'd be, if there's three tenants there, there'd be six entrances.
Yeah, one facing the street and one facing the parking lot.
Okay, I think I understand now. So I assume the applicant would argue that affects the efficiency of the space, or? I don't know.
Mainly for the inline tenants, it's, you know, if you have a pass-through, because you have to have operable doors during business hours on both sides, then, you know, where do the bathrooms go? Where does a little office go? Where does their storage go? It really cuts into what we would call backup house, which is, I think, what Nick was alluding to. It doesn't then give them the flexibility to be able to divide the building up into smaller pieces to accommodate, hopefully, not only a financial institution with a remote teller, but also small businesses that, you know, aren't going to want a a large space and then have the security issues of having entrances with people coming in on both sides.
So just to the west, I guess, is there's a sidewalk. So if I, there's a sidewalk on Ashford Parkway, and then there's another sidewalk alongside the building there? Is that what I'm seeing?
Yes, on both sides. I mean, there's plenty of of room, you know, that, and I think you'd have to walk an extra 50, 60, 70 feet, maybe, to get to the other entrance on the other side. And hopefully, that would then even, and this just occurred to me, draw them into the center, and then they see, you know, what else is available on the inside and and then are encouraged to go to multiple locations.
All right, Commissioner Mivad? So who's the group you work for?
I can't hear.
We we can't, yeah. You need to put the mic right in front of you, so move it to your left, right. There we go, and like this close.
Okay, got it. Anyways, what I was saying was, the questions for them, however, just to disclose, I do work for a subsidiary owned ultimately by a bank. Doesn't seem like we have the identity of the proposed bank that might go there or any of its competitors, but want to disclose that in in the event that I should have seen from voting. Don't really think it makes a difference, but nevertheless.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No, that's it.
All right. I've got a couple of questions. Let me begin with Ms. Smith. Dr. Smith, I presume, there you are. Condition number 20 that we had before, there shall be no minimum parking requirements for the undeveloped northern parcel on the property. Why? Are you all recommending that be stricken?
Right, because we don't, we don't have minimum parking requirements. It's sort of a null condition. We actually have maximum parking restrictions.
We have maximums, so they can do anything less than that. So that's why you're doing that.
It's unnecessary.
Yeah. Just just as a reaction, when I saw this, the first question I had was why so many parking spaces were needed? Because you have a total of what, 80 or excuse me, 62, if I read this right? First of all, it's 1.05 acres, not 1.5 acres. Is that correct? Yeah, so when you heard one and a half acres, it's not that. It's it's less than that. Secondly, as it relates to the standalone ATM, previously, and this is for Ms. Smith again, I guess, they were allowed to have the ATM at the Publix in another one on the other side of the center, right? So they would have two? Or is that not correct?
I'd have to look at the old conditions.
Do you know, Ms. David, if that was the case? You were you were allowed two? Or or just one, or it was a drive-through, I think is what it was?
Yeah, there was one drive-through.
Okay, one drive-through and one.
Standalone bank.
Okay.
Which then became obsolete, which, as a discussion about this evening. And so then we came back about a year later, I think it was, something like that, and to convert that to a medical office building, because there was some question, I think, the building need be redesigned, which required a site plan change. And they, but the drive-through was still left in place. Since that time, the medical tenant that is in the building, I think, almost, has said they don't want the drive-through, so per the zoning conditions that they're putting in the landscape strip. So essentially, we're just asking for that to be moved to this even less exposed area, kind of by, you know, almost by, hesitate to say, the Publix loading dock on Ashwood Parkway.
Next question is to Commissioner Harris's point. If I look at the proposed site plan, I see where the eight parking spots are next to the Parkway. Those could be eliminated, couldn't they?
No, we've we've, our parking is pretty tight. Again, it all has to do with flexibility. So it, and it all has to do, right now, it's being parked sort of under the assumption of a certain amount of restaurant use, which obviously requires more parking than.
I mean, people, if this were to happen to be filled, they could park any other parts of the center, if they were using these retail spaces.
Yeah, well, there's complications with that, too, so.
Well, well, yes, so ultimately, they they can park anywhere, but this this space where people will park and and across the overall center is is at an average of a little bit more than five per thousand. Most of the retailers anymore, restaurants are going to want 10 per thousand. And to get these type of of restaurants in, I mean, we all like to think that people don't drive here, and they're going to walk and all that, but the truth is, every one of us are going to drive and park here. And so our center is going to be super crowded as far as parking. Like, if you go to down to the Whole Foods in in Shamley, you know, they have about the same ratio. If you've ever been there, you can't find a parking spot. So it's going to be nice, you know, this is going to be great. But the minimum, the parking we have right now is the ultimate minimum. And and we're being, we're we're walking a tight line because our retailer, our national retailer Publix, says any restaurant that we get in, they want to have 10 per thousand. So we've kind of met in the middle with them as we're kind of getting pulled over here. So so we feel like, right now, with the mix of restaurants we're going to have in there, and it's right a little above five per thousand, if you take in the patio space, we're going to be pretty packed at parking as it is. So to the answer, if we can eliminate those eight spaces up top, I prefer not to. But if you remember, we had that same scenario of those spaces against road, multiple other places on the site. However, these are 20 foot off the road, and they'd be fully landscaped.
Did you have more, Ms. David, on that point?
Yes, just to sort of hearken back to the original zoning, don't forget that the all of the traffic improvements that were required of us to do resignalization at Ashwood Parkway, I think we did some work down at Meadow Lane. We redesigned that intersection into Middle Lane. They donated, well, the, well, to the public, anyway, donated an acre for a a private street connection. All of that was based on a traffic study, which showed, you know, an extensive number of trips going in and out of the center. And we, you know, what we're proposing to park is is very much in line with that traffic study.
Let me move on to the doors. If 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 I think of retail and and restaurant, the idea of, especially with restaurant being able to activate the patio area, wouldn't that almost necessitate having doors at the backside?
I think they.
On those rear ones, or on the side ones, we'll definitely have rear doors there. Where we're pushing back is, is a lot of these retailers, even the financial institutions that we're talking to, are just going to take a 20-foot space, a 1,400-square-foot space. So then ultimately, that's the size of this opening right here. Small spaces are shot, they're 70 foot long, and and there's just not room for a door. If there's a larger space, and they take two of them, 2,800, a door can probably be worked in. So what we just don't want the requirement is that every space has a door. It needs to kind of be worked out, and that's what I'm saying. We want to sit down with Richard and his staff and say, hey, maybe we don't have to put a door in every single 20-foot space, but if it's a 40-foot space, we need to put a door in. They have more room to work their interior to make that work. But to do a hard and fast rule that says every space needs a door just limits the smaller retailers, because they don't have the room to re to design around that. That's all.
Since that's suggesting that if it's the corner units that they would have to have doors, and then the center ones would not necessarily have it unless it was a larger space?
Well, our attempt to provide an option really was just to, you know, to me, the simple thing to do is just to take the condition that was already really in place on the property about the entrances. But as Jack said, you know, we're we're willing to, you know, wordsmith even that a little bit with staff.
Mr. McCloud has is 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 looking to jump into the debate.
Let me start by saying, all the buildings have to have two, two doors, a front door and a rear fire door. All we're asking is that they keep, well, we're actually asking the street-facing side to be open during business hours.
Right, I mean, but I mean, I, when I, when I look at the size of this building, I my assumption is four, maybe up to six tenants at most. Okay, so you would, my gosh, my computer turned off. So the idea is that you would have, you know, patron access points to be able to walk off the patio or the sidewalk into the back of these. The point that they're making, though, is they're too small, you know, 24 feet wide, that is, it's going to make it impracticable to put that is, it's going to make it impracticable to put a retailer in there or something like that. Your point is you want people to be able to walk in after they've eaten or before they've eaten or while they're waiting to be seated to be able to activate the space that's being used from the backside. So.
And also, I've heard three to four tenant spaces is all we've been told. Those fire doors, you can't block them anyway, so.
Right, you have to have a fire door anyway for each of the spaces, right? No, 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 I, you know, fire door can be right next to the restroom and storage. And people don't see that part is what you're getting at, but if people are going to be walking through it, then the idea will be, it needs to be nicer than that. Although I've been to restaurants where that's not been applied. Right?
Yeah, somebody has to monitor both entrances that works for the establishment. So, you know, if it's a small business with one employee, that could be problematic.
Well, I mean, that that raises a question of when we bring in the windows too. And and, you know, if I understand things, part of the reason you have windows is something as quaint as window shopping. For those of you who used to do that back in the day. But, you know, the idea is that the spaces proceed from the exterior. So it becomes more activated with each other, if I understand things right. That's the idea behind it to to get to Ms. Smith's point. You have anything to add to that, or?
No, we agree to that. And and in these type of retailers, that's going to be tough for them to do. You know, there's not going to be many people that are walking in off of Ashford Parkway to these retailers. We, you know, Richard is right, every space will require a door, you know, on both sides. But what we don't want is the the Ashford on the smaller spaces, the door to be an active door. Because as as gentleman over here said, that becomes a security issue. They've got to worry about their back door if they're selling goods, people getting stolen, stolen. There's there's all kinds of other things that go along with just a small tenant. We want local tenants, they're not these big national chains. And so they don't want that rear rear door to be active. It needs to be a fire door with a break on it. We're happy to put that door in there and it looked like glass and looked everything from the outside, but it just can't be a fully functional door from the Ashford side.
Well, if the space is activated in a patio area, it won't be the smoking break spot anymore.
Patio on those two ends, they will have the true activity.
But, you know, by the same token, if they're active patio areas and very successful outdoor engagement, you know, let's say restaurants and whatnot, then presumably the tenants that are in the middle would benefit from the traffic. Right, I mean, what one one, and this is actually for the whole project, and I've I brought this up before with the staff and they say you all have considered it. But when I look along Ashford Dunwoody Road, you have a drop-down to where the multi-use trail is going, eight to ten feet drop. And the distance from the road to where the drop is is relatively narrow. My understanding is you're going to be putting trees along there? Is that correct?
So from the edge of curb right now, on Ashford Dunwoody, there's going to be eight-foot green space at the Ashford Dunwoody left. There'll be trees along there and street lighting.
Right, right. Yes, I've seen that. Well, what I, well, maybe you go to the microphone because there are people that are watching. Just just an observation, and and I say this when I look at highway safety kind of things, the speed limit there is forty-five miles an hour on Ashford Dunwoody. I wish it was thirty-five. I think it should be thirty-five. I think the warrants would reflect that and what we're trying to do with that road segment would allow for a slower speed limit. But having said that, I do note across the street, there are, I guess, a barrier that's been put up, you know, to guard against vehicles going over the side. I have represented owners whose tenants had vehicles smashed through their front window, unfortunately injuring their patrons. And the the question was whether bollards should have been installed from the parking lot to that front window when you have perpendicular parking. So I point that out to you because it's outside your property and you're being aware of it and you have your safety engineers and engineers who look at that. And the addition of trees there is a technique to get people to slow down, you know, by by virtue of the way that kind of works. But ju- just recognize that is a forty-five mile an hour segment, so there are relatively high speeds, especially for those who feel that speed limits are merely suggestions. But keep that in mind because I, you know, obviously nobody would ever want anything bad to happen there. But the circumstances, one could envision a vehicle traveling that speed would go well beyond that first eight-foot strip beyond the multi-use trail into one of those buildings. Or, for example, where First Watch is, right, which is an open patio area, which is thankfully going to be activated with, you know, patrons on nice days like today.
Right, okay.
Just just keep that in mind. I mean, I I throw that out there to you because, you know, that's 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 you're the owners.
Okay, thank you.
So, anyway. Any more questions? Are you seeing that?
I have one question, yes, and and may I ask you a question? You you raised the ratio of parking spaces to to square footage in the that Shamley complex. And one of the things that I note about that complex, if we're thinking of the same one, and I believe we are, is a good number of parking spaces in that lot are partially paved with pervious material. There's there's lattice work in many of those spaces. Concrete lattice, basically, that that appears to be pervious. Now, I don't know and I'm not experienced with that. Has that been considered for some of the space here?
We've met, you know, all our impervious requirements, and we did those studies, you know, years ago with the amount of green space that we have available now. So we didn't need to do that. They 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 have considerably less green space than we do in islands and all that, so they had to do that. And we've had to do that in other places to meet the pervious requirements. We we met them here, whatever the code was. There was once I was in front of this podium and I knew all that. That was years ago, but I don't, but we didn't have to do that.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, any more comments or questions, anybody? Just, I'm just going to make an observation of of, you know, any drive-through anything. And, you know, my my initial reaction when I read this was that, you know, do we want to set more precedence for more drive-through in Dunwoody's, particularly in this market of perimeter center? And my initial reaction was no, but my question earlier was if we're removing the drive-through from the other side of the center, replacing it with a kiosk, is that setting a precedence or not? We've already approved the other drive-through before. So it's for me, it's 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 kind of like you're shifting it to to a spot, not being in personally in favor of drive-throughs in general, so an understanding market trends for that kind of stuff. It just is my observation on that. And
that's, no, and and I feel the same way as you do, Bob, but I I one of the things that I think was a compelling argument that I hadn't heard made before was that it allows reuse of the space. We don't have an empty bank sitting open, should it should a bank tenant leave? And by allowing that, I think, I think that that can be a compelling argument, honestly. So, yeah, I agree.
More conversation or debate? If not, we're ready for a motion of your pleasure.
So I think to Commissioner O'Brien's point earlier, I think there are things to be worked out with staff still. So my recommendation at this point would actually be to defer this to next month and allow staff to continue conversation with branch regarding the, what seems to be some serious conversations about windows, doors. I think they need to talk about the drive-through ATM some more and
Landscaping.
Landscaping and then head on back our way. I feel like we've heard two sides and ultimately, they're going to go back. And with that continued dialogue, it's going to get moved again, which means that what city council will be seeing isn't what we'll be sending an approval on or disapproval on. So I would make a motion to defer one month and allow city staff to continue to have dialogue with branch.
And I would second that. As far as conversation, from the staff perspective, how does that affect things, if at all?
Doesn't affect much. We'll be back if you guys want us back here, so.
From the applicant perspective, how does that affect things if at all? I'm saying it's a delay of any kind like this.
Yeah, it would delay us. I think they're doodling on it just now. So, and I'm sorry, I was in Tucker last night. I've got Shamley on Thursday. So a recommendation for a deferral, do we then go to the city council to ask for a deferral or is this sort of the last stop on a deferral?
We we would defer, I mean, if if the motion passes, then you would come back to us next month at this time. And as I understand the conversation about the motion, it is to address some of the issues that have been raised tonight. And you, we, in our conversation, and and the reason we kind of structured this way is to allow those issues to kind of percolate and identify themselves. So the other stuff is kind of settled. Now, these are the things that have to be addressed.
Great, no, and and I understand that.
That would be one thirty day. We we can't defer it again, correct?
Well, we, we didn't change that for this. We changed it for for variances. Right, so we we only allowed one, so that's that would be it.
Okay, I got two nods.
Okay.
They're grudging nods, but I appreciate, I appreciate the reasons that you're asking for the deferral.
Right. Any more questions or conversation? All right, all those in favor of the motion, see if they're raising your hand. All right, unanimous, so there's no no's. Thank you, Attorney David, and everybody for the project and I have to say, it looks better than a duck pond. Well, actually, they're Canadian geese. Good luck with that. All right, next, I had asked Richard if he wouldn't talk a little bit about this article that was in the reported newspaper, which I gave you a copy of, and I thought it was interesting because it was going to be a study done on perimeter center conducted by Pond that the city is engaged. And for those in the audience and online and us, the importance of perimeter cannot be understated or overstated. In other words, the reason that we enjoy a lot of the benefits as homeowners in Dunwoody without paying a whole lot for it is because we have an incredibly active commercial district and perimeter is the anchor of all that. So this is, this this to me was exciting news, so I thought Richard could take a couple of minutes just to tell us what this is all about.
Yeah, Michael Starling and I have been talking for some time now. What's going to happen after perimeter mall? Are they going to last forever? There's an eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the area. So we applied for the ARC for a grant. Turns out that LCI, it fits well into there, so it's funded, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The city is only paying thirty thousand. It's being matched by the PICD. Yep, yeah. So they're our partner in this. It's designed to bring about what is, what's going to happen in the next twenty years. Suppose the mall fails or partly fails or all the businesses around it. Even considering what happens if the pandemic continues. So, but we're looking at green space, we're looking at art, we're looking at connectivity. Several, the mall is such a large piece of property, there are several spots that make some good connections through there. So I'm sure you all will be involved. We're going to reach out to property owners. The commercial property owners, residents that live in the area, go on the city council on board. So the goal is to have a plan by next fall. That it'll be the first phase of it. Second phase will be if this is the plan, how do we ma- make that matchup with the summit? So that next part will come heavily on community development. We'll have to draft a code to absorb all that.
Very neat. You become futurist. All right, so when all the self-driving cars come, we'll be ready. Do you have any other business than that?
Richard, what's the property owner you keep referencing? What's their attitude about this study? I assume they'd be actively involved with it.
Yes, we contribute. It's it's the larger perimeter area, so it's several of the property owners. Obviously, the mall is a huge one. I mean, it's the biggest tax base in the county, so.
And don't forget the tenants. Because sometimes their interests diverge from the owners.
Sure.
Well, thank you for that. All right, we have a public comment section. Is there any public comment for tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll go with Commissioner comments. Commissioner Mubad, welcome once again. Any comment?
No comments.
Okay. Just want to say, welcome, Hallie. We're glad you're here. Commissioner Harris?
Second to it, Tom, just, welcome.
All right, I've got a comment. So I was able to speak with Mayor Deutsch recently, and she will be appointing somebody. As you know, I'm holdover, somebody to take my place, so that will be coming down the road. And whether or not this is my last meeting or not depends on when that appointment occurs. Because once that appointment occurs, then according to our code section two eighty-four, then my term will expire. So I just want to let you all know that. By way of background, it's been my pleasure to serve with all of you, the staff. You've been great, all the people that we've had before us over these several years since I've been on this board, since its inception of the city. And it's just been great to see how we've evolved. And the degree and, you know, the the scope of what we're doing is so much different than it was just ten years ago. And what I love is the fact that with the work of this commission, the staff and so many other people, that we are considering so many other opportunities for our community that years ago we would never consider. And that that to me is just really, really neat. And there are two things, though, that I I would ask you to keep your eye on, that I brought up periodically. My hope is that we, as a city, consider these. The first one is, you've heard me talk about inclusionary zoning. I think it's so important that a city like Dunwoody take that conversation on with the citizens of Dunwoody, the stakeholders, and create a policy for our city that meets the needs of our city. And right now, we don't have that policy, and I know the city council has on occasion thought about it, but I just think that's the right thing to do. And, you know, if we're going to continue to 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 lead as as a city, I think that's part of what we need for that. The second thing, and you've heard me mention this periodically, and it has to do with perimeter center specifically. And that is whether it's a service fee and or impact fee, two different things. But what they do is they allow revenue to be generated in perimeter center that can be used to create amenities in perimeter center. So for those of us who activate you know, more uses in perimeter center, you know, whether it's living units, retail, office space, with that, with more people, we need the amenities. And so how are they going to be paid for? And, you know, whether the service fee, which can be done, you know, for a lot of transportation-style projects, as well as multi-use trails and and amenities associated with those to the impact fee. And for example, we do have a lot of apartments coming online with the High Street project, and there may be more as, you know, projects come through here. Which, you know, when you consider all perimeter, we have four modest stations. So as our region continues to accept sixty to a hundred thousand people a year, you know, and there's a good market for people to live in multifamily housing. The question for me is, gee, shouldn't they be near transit, right? Well, we've got that. So the question is, do we execute it well? And how do we pay for the amenities that would support those folk? And so my hope is that down the line, the city has a serious conversation about that with the property owners. And I've noticed this about property owners, and the CID is a really good example. If it benefits them, they like it, right? So the CID, they pay for it, but they benefit from it because they get to guide those dollars. So that is one of those things, and, you know, for example, just one of my dreams has always been that next to the Dunwoody Modest Station, those six acres, in a city, in conjunction with the CID, came up with a very good conceptual site plan, which, by the way, came from the very first livable communities initiative many, many years ago. which, by the way, came from the very first livable communities initiative many, many years ago. Some very clever person said, hey, we can make that a park. And so when you look at that, those are the kinds of amenities I'm talking about in the central core of the perimeter. And so I'd just like to, again, say it's been a pleasure to serve with each of you. And I've appreciated your comments, your thoughtfulness and your ideas, and you're willing to engage. Because so often people sit back and say, well, I don't have a voice. And if we are left with this, it's by hope, and I know sometimes it causes our meetings to run longer, that we continue to allow folks to come before us, whether we agree or disagree, that they know their voice has been heard and understood. And I think collectively, we've done a really good job with that over the many, many years. So that anybody who walks out that door doesn't feel like they haven't been heard. Because that, to me, is critical to trusting government. And so thank you all for this great 11 years.
Well, Mr. Dallas, we go way back in this role and you and I have agreed and disagreed for a lot of, on a lot of different issues, but you've been a heck of a point guard. And you've been fair, you've been very considerate of applicant, staff, commissioners. I think you've done a great job of, in this role, and you've served your community. And thank you for 11 years, Sarah.
Well, since the city started, 2009, January.
So. Thank you for all your, all your efforts. And again, I think you've been a heck of a point guard, is the way I think of it, so.
Thank you, thank all of you.
Commissioner Dallas, I'm going to go ahead and echo what Kirk said. And I also want to thank you on a personal note, I've learned a lot from you. I've learned a lot of elements of this job from the way you approach problems and the way you examine them. And I want to thank you for that, and I think you've done a terrific job as point guard as well, and you're going to be missed. So, thank you, sir.
I'm going to add on to that and just agree. I mean, I'm the, now I'm not the most newbie here, but, I mean, Bob, watching you, listening to you, and I think in particular, what would be the complexity in which you were able to consider things and talk about things and think about things outside the box and think long-term has been a benefit to me. And thinking about things holistically is something that I feel has rubbed off from you to me, thinking about, you know, the parking and thinking about, you know, the modalities of how people are accessing places and, and that long-term vision, that we aren't just looking at something today. And to some of our conversations earlier, retail's changing, but so is how people access it in terms of this is a growing area, so is it more walkable? And you've been an inspiration in that area, so. And yeah, point guard, father, whatever you want to call it, you know, you've been great, thank you.
Well, you all will do great, I know that. Thank you for the opportunity. So we stand adjourned.
I would say one other thing. If there's something you need us to know, it would be my hope that we might hear you. Well, you might hear you on a different mic here, because there are some ideas that you've shared that I'm going to say haven't occurred to me at varying points, and it would be my hope that you take the opportunity that this meeting affords to share those ideas.
I warn you, even though my wife doesn't like all my ideas, so just keep that in mind. But I will say some of the things I look at, what, probably the best way is, I don't mean to be sarcastic, but look at the future without you in that picture, because that's what you're leaving behind. The decisions we make today are going to be here when we're not. And that's really critical, because, you know, I have my preference for stuff, but it's not about me, it's about the collective of us in the future, the people who will take our place. Are we creating that place that when, you know, we're sitting in a rocket chair looking back, that we see people using and knowing that the decisions that we made caused them to use it in a really fun, interesting way? And I like to say, what's this all about? It's just a place where people like to be. And you've been there, right? You know where you want to be and you know where you don't want to be. So it's kind of like arts, you know, it's in the eye of the beholder, but that's what this is, it's an art. So thank all of you. Well, I will say this one last time, we stand adjourned.